I think my chair got moved. Do I have a motion to reconvene to regular section?
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Vote pass, six zero. Okay, at this point, we're now going to move into review of the budget from our last meeting. We presented it to you, and so I'm going to call on our financial director, Alicia Sorsy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have in front of us the budget that we went over line by line in the budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't made any changes to it. I know there was some discussion about some items that you may be interested in changing, so I would like to open up the floor for that discussion and allow you to tell me what you're thinking, so maybe we can get a consensus on the budget today.
Okay, so at this point, I am going to call on Clint because we had, or I had assigned him to do some more research on the district attorney's office and the public defender. So I do know that was a line item, so I'm going to turn it over to Clint to give us what questions we had that he went and got the answers for us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As you mentioned, there were a few conversation pieces regarding the district attorney's office and the public defenders. I did, was able to speak and meet with the district attorney, Mr. Cranford, and also our public defender, Ms. Simmons, and I wanted to say that they were both very gracious in trying to work with me. They were very gracious of, you know, the chairman and the finance director for what they had worked through previously in human resources, and kind of went back and tried to go through a little more detail with them. And you'll see before you, I put some information together along with some backup documentation I'd kind of like to go through to let you follow, I guess, my train of thought and how I tried to approach this. There were some questions about the public defender's office, what role it plays, and the funding and so forth. So if you look at the sheet that I provided, essentially the function and role of the public defender's office in summary is to adequately be supporting indigent defenders. It's critical to preserving the constitutional rights of individuals accused of crimes. Our criminal justice system in the United States, as you know, calls for the fact that all defendants are presumed innocent until proven guilty. While all accused aren't innocent nor guilty, the public defender's office plays a large role in helping to keep the judicial system moving forward. This includes, in some instances, plea deals that are negotiated and ultimately accepted by both the district attorney and the public defender. This requires adequate resources in both departments, such as investigations, client advocates, actual attorneys assigned to handle each case, in some instances, mental or drug health evaluations, et cetera. Employees of this particular department are considered quasi, which is, by definition, is seemingly or apparently but not really. So, for example, the public defender's office employees from a liability perspective are actually under the jurisdiction from the state, but in reality, the department is expected to be funded by the local county in which they operate. So, public defender office employees do not receive raises or bonuses automatically like actual county employees do, but they are expected to be funded from the Carroll County as they service our local judicial needs. So we have to look at them on a case-by-case basis. If we vote for something county-wide, they would not automatically get that because they are quasi-employees, funded by us but are not technically our employees. With the DA's office, the Carroll County actually contracts with the state for them to be said-state employees, so although funding is still expected at the county level to support personnel, they're technically state employees. Same example for state court. It's the state court of Georgia here in Carroll County, yet it operates for the sole function of Carroll County and therefore is expected to be funded locally as well. There are some employees that are completely funded from some state grants in the public defender's office, but that's only one or two, and I believe Ms. Simmons has approximately about 13 employees total in her office. While it was my opinion that I brought up at the last work session based off of research that Carroll County does not actually need to necessarily have to fund dollar-for-dollar for each one of those different departments, I do believe there's an expectation to properly fund each in a manner that they can progress forward together to handle cases appropriately by having sufficient means in which to do so. So I think it's important that we have to look and work with them together to see what we are funding, are they able to kind of keep on a level playing field, if you will, to move the cases forward in each instance where the public defender is involved. The support material is attached to the packet here that you have before you, but in FY '28, there were the following budget allotments in comparison to FY '27. In '17, the district attorney's office was $981,007.03, and FY '18, that went to $1,168,870. So that was an increase of about $187,000. The public defender's office in '17 was at $908,275, and in '18, that went to $943,251. So that was a difference of around $34,000, $35,000. So certainly not saying that there was anything wrong with what happened, not saying that we have to keep up with everything that happens that precedes us, but on the same note, I think it is important to kind of look at history data to see how the departments have been funded and how we move forward under our tenure. The original draft budget proposal for the district attorney's office was $1,173,246 that was presented to us. That was an increase of $60,000 being proposed for FY '22. The original draft budget proposal for the public defender was $1,118,527. That was an increase of $169,000. I was able to talk with them frankly. Ms. Simmons was very gracious in the spirit of negotiation, so to speak, and trying to work with me to try to come up with something that we thought, that the district attorney felt like that there was more of an equal balance because that dollar amount is somewhat spread out there. So in those negotiations, the public defender has agreed to forego $20,000 from her personnel line item, which puts that at $67,000 change for FY '22 for a total net change budget of $149,976. The district attorney has agreed to increase the personnel line, obviously by accepting an additional $20,000 for a total allotment adjustment of $80,000 for the personnel line item, and that FY '22 is reflecting $649,418 in personnel and a total budget increase to a total amount of $1,193,426. The difference between, if this is accepted, the difference between those two budgets is right at $100,000. There are a lot of cases, obviously, that require the public defender's office, in connection with prosecution on the district attorney's side, but not all of them require that. So I think if you're just trying to look at dollar-for-dollar, I think it's understood why the district attorney's office would still have, you know, a little more in their budget considering everything that they handle would not have to go through the public defender's office. With these particular funds, the district attorney's office will be able to move a part-time DA investigator to full-time, will be able to move a part-time receptionist to a full-time legal assistant, plus pay merit raises to current employee. So there's three main things that the district attorney would be able to accomplish with that additional $20,000. The public defender's office will be able to hire a full-time client advocate for Carroll County instead of having to split that between three counties, and the remainder will be utilized for merit pay increases. There's support documentation from both Ms. Simmons and from Mr. Cranford attached for that information as well. One thing to keep in mind, the importance of the client advocate, there are certain instances where certain clients of theirs do not qualify for our mental health program nor for our drug court, but they still have issues that need to be professionally attended to, and so that's the importance of the client advocate, is trying to work and figure out exactly where they can go. Most importantly, there's no proposed adjustment to the overall county budget. These proposed changes are simply interdepartmental only. So $20,000 coming from the public defender back over to the district attorney doesn't change the total projected budget that has been presented by the chairman and by the finance department. I'd also like to add, if you look at some of the expenditures in the budget of the public defender, we had agreed to add some money there for some IT assistance in the current fiscal budget that's now playing over into the FY '22. There was also some contract differences there, one of those being an attorney that they were having a contract to do some work with, some additional monies that was needed there, also some contracts on the actual physical facility that we rent for them. It's now being brought out of the old contract. They've got a new owner, and so we're now going to be separating out the actual expenditures of running it through, such as cleaning the facility and also for the electricity and utilities. So when you look and kind of subtract out those things that I feel like are not necessarily something that the public defender's office can control on those additional expenditures, you're really looking at only about a $50,000 increase over what the district attorney is getting. So if you try to compare back to 2018 from the FY, I think it kind of is bringing the two departments a little bit more in alignment. Obviously, both of them have additional needs that they'd like to see in the future, but both of the individuals that I've just listed, mentioned in their departments, were very pleased, and I want to thank them for being willing to sit down and talk with me and negotiate. You have the information before you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to go through that. There's some more details and the support documentation as well.
Any questions for Clint, or can I ask for a consensus to have Alicia make this change in the current budget I presented to y'all?
I'm okay with it.
Me too.
I talked with Herb Cranford briefly, and he said basically that $20,000 was a good thing, so I'm fine with it.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm hearing a consensus to direct the finance director to amend or adjust the budget that we're going to present on June the 2nd for those changes. Okay?
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any other changes or any other, anything else that they would like to look at within the budget? Okay, I have one other change based on the proposal that Marsh McLendon made earlier. We can reduce our insurance line by about $100,000, and I would like to move that money from the insurance expense line to the contingency line.
Yeah.
I agree.
Shutting on G, waiting on them.
So can I ask for a consensus that you're okay with since we're saving, just to move it to contingency so that sometime during the next year, if we need it, we've got it to vote on, and y'all, of course, as Jack said, you still have to vote on any expenditures out of that line.
Right.
Okay, so I have a contingency, consensus. Okay, so Alicia, will you make that change?
Okay, that's the only changes that I had for the budget, so unless anybody else wants to bring anything to light, I would say that we, that concludes our budget, and we should have consensus then headed into the work session and meeting for this to be our budget.
Correct, so we will have a work session next Thursday, so there's another opportunity to look at the budget again, and then actually on Tuesday, the 2nd, I'll entertain a motion to...
The first.
Excuse me, why do I keep saying the second? Because I'm going out of town on the second. I guess that's why I'm ready to go. On June the 1st, I'll be looking for a motion to approve and a second, the budget on that night. Okay?
Gotcha.
And I have one other...
So we have another little bit of budget information we want to go over that we'll be putting on the agenda that you will be seeing shortly, but we wanted to get some direction from you before we move forward on the agenda.
And I'm sorry, I don't have handouts for each person. I just got this completed, and I will email it to you, but I did need some direction on it. It looks like at the end of the year that our budgeted revenue, our actual revenue is going to be about $4.5 million above our budgeted revenue.
And let me interrupt you. Let's, remember last year, this time, we were sitting here, and we had no idea, we were in the middle of the pandemic, or the beginning of the pandemic, I suppose, and we were very, very conservative with our, what we thought our revenues would be, you know? At that time, the county was still shut down, the United States was still shut down, so when we say excess, it's just a terminology we have to use. But in reality, if we had had a normal year, we would have budgeted more realistically. But at the time, we were being extremely conservative, and the department heads have been very conservative in their expenses. If you've all noticed, their expenses have stayed under budget, so it puts us in a positive position right this moment to have $4.5 million. I just don't want anyone thinking we have excesses. I just want everyone to understand it was because we were so, so tight last year and so, and I'd much rather be in this situation than be in the other where we didn't, it was, we could still be in a bad situation with our economy, and I'm just so thankful to the public and so glad we're back open.
And this isn't coming from property tax. This is all coming from motor vehicle tax and sales tax. So in light of what we thought was going to happen in the coming year, we thought that auto sales would probably get affected, and we also thought that sales tax would get affected. Fortunately for us, neither one did, and everybody seems to be spending their stimulus money and the sales tax revenues flowing back to the county. So with that said, we have proposed a couple of budget amendments throughout the year. We did one for $191,433, which was, a large portion of that went to the animal shelter. We did risk management and an increase in board of commissioner and probate salaries. And then we did another one for $1,043,131, which was the pathways and magistrate roof, the paving machine for Public Works, and a portion of the cost of the jail. So that leaves us with $3.165 million in revenue that's left that we could spend. Some of the proposed projects, and like I said, I'll send you an email with all this on it, but I just wanted you to hear it and go ahead and start thinking about it. The interior of pathways needs to be renovated, and we're looking at about $325,000 there. We've got a renovation at the rec department for some of the field lighting and some other things related to that, scoreboards and those things, about a half a million dollars there. And then rec needs some furniture for $3,000. We've got some new software we need at E911 for, it's dispatch software, that's about $96,000. We've had requests in the current budget, and I took these items out of the budget in anticipation that we would have this money to spend. There are computers for the tax assessor, solicitor, magistrate, probate, and the CI for $11,500. The CI has requested money to pave a parking lot of $17,000. They've requested, CI also has requested body cameras, radios, and tasers for $25,000. Fire has requested some replacement turnout gear for $45,000. Laptops to go in their fire trucks for the new CAD system, $16,000. Animal Shelter has requested a commercial dryer to handle all of their laundry out there. That's about $10,000. Public Works has requested a new landall trailer for $100,000. And then last year, we did not take any money out of the Sploesd account to refund the general fund for Sploesd projects. I'd like to ask to do that again, and that'll leave that money in Sploesd. That's $830,000. The airport has requested $150,000. And then we have some overages in our current budget, mainly in solid waste because of the increase in tonnage. That's going to be about $107,000. But to cover the increases we need in our current ballot, current budget, it's going to be about $205,500. That leaves $831,000 after, if we wanted to do all of those things.
And also next Thursday, like Clay Patterson will come before us to present to you what the $96,000 go, each, each of these will come with more documentation, more detail, so it's, you will understand specifically these numbers.
I would like to add a project, if possible.
Okay.
And that would be a roundabout on Bar J Road, and I've talked to Charles about it. He said we're looking at about $75,000. But there's been several accidents there where three roads come together, and I'd like to add a roundabout in that.
Okay.
Two things that are on my mind, just to throw out. One of them, you know, would require additional budgeted heads besides just the money, but for the dump trucks, but in Public Works, we are behind on paving due to COVID. We all know that infrastructure is a huge issue. It's something that I get more calls about, not only something needs to be fixed, but compliments. People recognize and see that because they drive on our roads every day. Some of the conversations I've had with Mr. Pope is, he feels like, you know, we're kind of taking things a little bit to the next level by having this new spreader, but to take things truly to the next level is the gap, gap time between when those dump trucks can get filled up at the asphalt plant and get back. There's idle time. So if we can add, you know, a couple more dump trucks, now here again, we'd have to add with budgeted heads, but if we could add that, that is where the increase is going to come in to be able to pave more roads, just trying to get caught up, plus once we get caught up, trying to do more in the future, because I think right now we're doing about 19 or 20 miles, Madam Chair, I think, a year roughly. So anyways, I see that as a next, you know, a possibility of something for us to look into there if we could. And the other thing is, and I haven't spoken with the sheriff or any of his command staff, but, you know, they're crediting the one officer in Villarica with surviving the shootout that recently happened by him putting on the rifle repellent vest, which is different than the normal bulletproof vest, because we all know the rifle, I guess, sends a bullet faster and I think it penetrates differently, so they, the State Patrol, my understanding is, and Ms. Holsy can correct me if I'm wrong, basically when the shootout originally started, he was able to call and let them know that there was a high-powered rifle being used. So Officer Gordy had put on that specialized vest, and they're saying they think that stopped the bullet, you know, that could have easily killed him had he not had that. So I don't know what the sheriff does or doesn't have, but that might be something really taking stuff to the next level. That was, I mean, I think we're all supporters of law enforcement, but that really opened my eyes. If you're not in that field, you think of a bulletproof vest as a bulletproof vest, and I learned, you know, that they're two totally separate depending on what they're having to deal with. So that could be a possibility to look into to see. I know at Villarica, I think the way they handled it is they have one per patrol car. I don't think they have had enough money in their budget for every single officer, but whichever officer's coming on duty for that car, and they're rotating out, that vest stays in that vehicle. So that might be something that we could look at moving forward, just, and here again, I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff, but him and his command staff, Mr. Walmsley, that might be something that we could look at as well, if that was on my mind.
Okay, well, like I said, we got $831,000 left. We did throw around the idea of possibly doing something else for the employees, like a small bonus, and really part of that, part of the thought process on that was HR brought up the fact that some of the local employers are paying sign-on bonuses now, and, you know, maybe we need to talk about saying thank you. I know we are doing a pay increase, and I know, I believe that the employees are appreciative of that. So that's another thing that you might consider with this money. But anyway, I need y'all to think about this. I'll get this. I'll email you this so that you can look at the numbers on paper. I know it's hard to, for me, just to start throwing numbers out there, and you get your mind wrapped around what you want to do with it. But I think it's an opportunity for us to fix a lot of broken stuff and maybe do something for the constituents and do something for the employees.
Can you put something together on the employees, what that would be?
Would you want something similar to what we did last year, if that was the...
Yeah, something, just so we know what we're voting on, you know, if we're going to do it, what are we giving, you know, across the board?
Right.
Do you want to do the same, okay, so the dollar amount might change, obviously, because we're dealing with a little bit different money, but do you want to stick to the same concept that last year and the year before we did, we gave, oh, Lord, my mind just went blank, how we did the full-time, the part-time, stick to that same...
And the longevity for so many years.
Yeah, they should come from longevity, yeah.
Yes.
So we might not do as much as we did last year, but some percentage...
Same formula. That's what I'm looking, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
The same formulas last year.
Yes, please.
The dollar amount might not be the same as we gave last year, but the formula, that you liked that last year's formula. Okay, so we'll plug in the $800,000 minus, well, $831 minus the $75,000 for the roundabout, and then figure out what that dollar comes to.
And we can talk to the sheriff about whether they need some of this or...
Yeah.
Sounds good.
The only, the only thing about the dump trucks and adding the head count, if we add head count, that's going to add to this current year budget, so...
I think that's, I think that's a starter for next year. I mean, I think this is a good conversation to have, that starting next, so our goal for next July 1st, 2022 would be to have some more dump trucks and more employees to pave roads.
And I'm fine with that. I mean, we were just having the discussion, and those were two ideas that I had in my head, and like I said, I mean, I know we support all of our departments, but Public Works, you know, trying, we've made a huge investment in this new equipment, and just speaking on Mr. Pope, that's what we're going to have to have to kind of take us to the next level to try to catch up and then move forward in the future. So I hope we'll at least consider that at whatever time we can try to look at it.
And speaking of these two topics, so on the dump trucks thing, I'd just like to interject. Possibly having Charles look at the viability of what we heard the other day, Tommy a few weeks ago, of the practice of, instead of using dump trucks all the way to, for 14 years until they dump over or wear out, if we might come out better and actually be able to buy a dump truck, keep it for a couple of years, sell it at the same price and not lose any money, that might benefit us in the long run. I'd just like somebody to take a look at that and see if that is a viable thing to do.
He said Mississippi and Alabama's doing that now.
Yeah.
And they're rotating, having new equipment, less maintenance.
Yeah.
You don't have to maintain it as much and not need it to break down.
Yeah.
So for next year's budget, I'll have him explore that, see if it's viable.
Yeah. And then on the employee side, I mean, I know I've said this before, I'm not, you know, unduly pushing or anything, but I just, I just think having a culture where we incentivize top performers, I'm all for giving everybody more money and duly rewarding our county employees, and I think we certainly should do that. I'd just like to see some system where department heads would have some flexibility in rewarding top performers if this gets into a, I mean, I would advocate for a, an evaluation system so that we could identify and reward top performers and incentivize them and keep them so that we, we keep the top performers in our workforce. But that's what we did at the state. It worked well. There has to be a very much a culture and a monitoring of that process so we don't have favoritism from department head to employees and that kind of thing, but I think if it's implemented, we might come out on the front end on that.
Okay, that's, that's all I had. I just wanted to get that out in front of everybody.
So bear with us. We hope to get the agenda to you Friday is what we're hoping, but all these documents take a little bit of time to get put together, and I don't need to remind y'all, we're missing Susan tremendously, so it has...
Yes, we are, even in the finance department. She helped, she helped all of us.
So we are a little... So we are a little slow on the take sometimes, so...
Do y'all need Clint to come in and help for a while?
Yeah, we do.
We will take him, yes. Yes.
I'm volunteering.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
All right, we're not hearing any more conversation. I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn this special call meeting.
Make some motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
That passed six to eight.